Okay, welcome to the Asheville City Council Second Budget Work Session. We, for those of you who are new to this, we are working our way through Asheville's budget and we're doing it in chunks. And so today, we have five different departments, I believe, that we are going to hear about, sort of trying to get down in the weeds here. As opposed to the way we manage the budget, when we get closer to it, it ends up having to zoom out. So here's our chance to zoom in a little bit more. We do want to try to time ourselves. We learned from our last budget work session that you need to pace, or we're going to get jumbled up at the end. And Gwen estimates that 21 minutes per presentation will be all that's allotted. Does that give 15 minutes at the end?
Yes, 4:45.
Okay, yeah, we have to have a break for the audio folks to switch over. All right, so today, we have Peggy, who is here as our interim city manager. Do you want to introduce yourself?
Peggy Rowe, interim city manager, interim assistant city manager, HR director.
Actually, you're acting.
Chief cook, bottle washer.
You're acting.
Acting interim.
That's a lot of acting in interims.
It is.
But we're glad that you're here, however temporarily.
Thank you. And I wanted to also let you know that Tony McDowell is actually going to start us off with a couple of introductory comments about the budget before the actual presentation. So Tony.
Did you back that in?
No.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council.
Okay, you're cutting everybody down to 19 minutes.
Yeah, okay, I'll be very fast. As you know, this is the second of five scheduled budget work sessions here in the fall. You may recall from the previous budget workshop that Asheville has some unique challenges around its cost of living, demographics, affordable housing, as well as significant daytime growth in its city population. At the work session today, you will continue to hear about those challenges and how they're impacting departmental budgets. You'll also continue to hear about the impact of the national economy on the city as an employer, and you'll hear about our focus on equity and how that is changing our service delivery models. The city also continues to experience significant community interest in planning and zoning as we address growth and the impact of non-residents. All of these and other factors demand changes in how services are delivered, and the kind of technology and the equipment needs that exist. Keeping pace with these changes in these areas allows us to have the best facilities and equipment to provide quality services to our residents and visitors. As important as our facilities, equipment, and technology needs are, people are still the organization's most important resource. The people we hire here are integral to the quality of the service that we deliver. Throughout the presentations last month, we noted that a large part of the budget is dedicated to the employees who provide the services. And you'll continue to see that theme in the presentations today. Today, you'll be hearing from the fire department, communications and public engagement, human resources, parks and recreation, and planning and urban design. Detailed budget information for each of these departments, as well as the presentations that they're going to share today, are available on the city's website for everyone to view. We appreciate the opportunity to review the budget in more detail, and I'll invite Chris Bezinski, interim fire chief, up for the first presentation today.
Interim fire chief.
An interim fire chief, yeah.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. I'm Chris Bezinski again. I'm your interim fire chief for Asheville Fire Department. We're going to go through, give you an overview of the fire department, so you have a better understanding of us, and then we'll also discuss our budget and some of the challenges that we've encountered for the past several years. So the fire department is broken down into three distinct divisions. We have the emergency response force, we have our fire marshal's office. So we have our emergency responses, personnel, we have our fire marshal's office, and we also have administration, which of course supports those other two divisions. These divisions, I'll start with our emergency response division. We're broken down into three, excuse me, three battalions across the city, which encompass 12 fire stations strategically located, that contain 16 fire companies that are 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and one fire company, which is a daytime fire company, four days out of the week. That's 65 members minimum per day, is what our staffing level is. So that, you'll see that a couple times today, how that impacts us. So those emergency response, that division is primarily responsible for fire suppression and emergency medical service response. We do that about 20,000 times a year. So we have 20,000 calls for service annually. And what we find is, as we benchmark against other cities, is that we're, we typically are closer to the cities that have a population of 150,000 to 200,000, and that's because of our daily visitors that come to enjoy the, all of the city of Asheville. So that drives up our service delivery needs. So out of the, and also out of those 20,000 calls, we are somewhat unique in that we trend that 50% of our run volume is in the fire suppression side, and 50% in emergency medical, responding emergency medical incidents, which include traumas and life-threatening illnesses. The reason for that is because we have instituted processes in the past, so that we filter out non-life-threatening incidents from our dispatch, from the dispatch center, so that Asheville Fire Department is not actually responding to incidents where it's a non-life-threatening emergency. So we prioritize only life-threatening emergencies. And I'll talk more about those as we get into the discussion about our key partnership with Buncombe County EMS. We are also the lead agency for the city in responding and preparing, responding, and recovering from emergency management disasters and man-made disasters. So we have a component of the fire department that helps to coordinate that response, the preparation, response, and recovery throughout the city. Another core service we provide is community risk reduction. This is where our fire marshal's office plays an integral role. We have about 22 members in the fire marshal's office, and they are every day conducting fire and life safety education. We do that to hundreds of city residents from all ages, and our goal is to prevent as many accidents, fires, and other issues like that, so that we never have to engage our emergency response side. We prefer to prevent it, and of course, it's a lot less impact on our resident, and also the buildings and that sort of thing. We also have a very robust fire prevention code program. We do plan reviews for new construction, we do new construction inspections, and we also do periodic inspections of businesses and occupancies throughout the city on a periodic schedule. And I'll talk about the requirement for that in just a moment. Those are our four main core services. Of course, we do a lot more than that. A key thing we do internally is our departmental training, and that involves, that also includes our recruit academy, you'll see on the slide. So every firefighter begins in a recruit academy, and we teach them how to become firefighters. So this is, allows us to hire a civilian with no prior experience, and then at the end of this recruit academy, they're able to perform as a Nashville firefighter. We also provide a tremendous amount of continuing education for our firefighters to make sure that they are as best prepared for anything that they can encounter, and we also provide a lot of leadership education, so that we have appropriate supervisory education for our leadership in the department. Another key service is our special operations. This is found in the emergency response section or division of the fire department. This includes response to unique hazards that we may encounter, such as swift water rescues. So we have a swift water rescue team, any dive incident, so we have a dive team that can perform dive missions. We, also unique in North Carolina, we have one of seven hazardous material response teams, which is funded mostly by the state of North Carolina, and we are responsible for the 19 westernmost counties for all technical hazardous materials incidents. So if there's a tanker accident, or something with any sort of chemical or hazardous substance, we typically get a response to take care of that. And we're contracted through the state to do that. And that allows us to also have those resources in-house in the city that we don't have to purchase. And the last thing I'd like to mention on this slide is the logistics. So as I mentioned, we're 24 hours a day, seven days a week, as y'all well know, and to keep that machine running is a heavy lift sometimes. And so our logistics personnel make sure that we have all the equipment that we need, that we are, all that equipment is maintained appropriately, our fire stations, with the help of general services, are maintained appropriately. And so this includes all of our fire hose, fire trucks, stations, everything that we do is maintained by our logistics division. So that's an overview of all the services that we provide. There's more on the slide, those are the ones I'm going to highlight currently. So why don't we do what we do? So there's a lot of things that play into that. The North Carolina, there's a few North Carolina general statutes specifically that address some of the things that we do. One of them I mentioned is our periodic building inspections for fire code violations. So the state of North Carolina mandates that we are in each business occupancy at a certain frequency. So our goal is to meet that 100% of the time, meet that schedule 100% of the time. And we do that with our fire marshal's office, and it depends on the occupancy type, depends on how often they have to be in those buildings. A school is twice a year, standard business, and a strip mall maybe once every three years. So there's a significant range of what that, those periodic inspections require. Another place where general statutes impact us, all of our training is developed from general statutes. So our, all of our fire service training, our fire code training, all of that is delivered based on the North Carolina general statutes, who provide for the development and delivery of that training through the North Carolina State Fire Marshal's Office. So OSHA guidelines, or OSHA, depending on how you say it. I say OSHA, you say OSHA. So a lot of OSHA guidelines impact us. One that is very unique to the fire service is what we call the, more commonly called the two-in, two-out rule. This impacts our minimum staffing of our fire companies, and it requires that for a fire company to operate at a building fire, if two firefighters are operating, we have to have two firefighters outside prepared to assist those two firefighters that are operating with any emergencies that they may encounter. So it's really a, it's a backup team for that initial fire attack team. So it has a huge impact on us and how we staff our fire companies, because we want to maintain that minimum level of four, so that we can provide the best service. Other guidelines include our self-contained breathing apparatus. We have to have a respiratory policy that makes sure that we're testing our firefighters, make sure that their breathing apparatus works appropriately. We test the breathing apparatus. It also impacts our turnout gear, what gear we're, what we wear, how we wear it, when we wear it, and our incident command guidelines on how we manage fires and other hazardous material incidents. So it impacts us in a lot of different ways. Another one, which I'm sure you've heard us talk about before, is the National Fire Protection Association. And this, this group sets best practice and standards for the fire service, mostly related to the fire code, also significantly related to fire equipment and fire service delivery. So those things.
We're talking about fire.
This is just for fire suppression.
This is just for fire suppression, just in the event.
In case I catch on fire.
We took your class.
Yeah, so we're ready. Y'all are ready for anything. It's awesome. It's working. So the NFPA guides, fire service delivery, firefighter safety standards, and also impacts the fire code, among other things. So how it relates to our deployment, the NFPA, again, kind of parallels OSHA guidelines in that they recommend a four-person minimum staffing of our fire companies, again, so that we can be as efficient as we can be. We all know how physically demanding fighting a building fire can be, and having the appropriate amount of personnel on the fire companies is imperative for us to most effectively do our business. And they help us, they provide guidance for that. Another one, which I know you heard of last, as we were, as y'all were approving this upcoming, our current budget, is related to our personal protective equipment, and NFPA guidelines specify what the, how our turnout gear, what we wear into fires, is built, designed, maintained, tested, and cleaned. So we are constantly making sure that we are, meet the standards, so that we are providing the best service to our firefighters, they have the best serviceable gear, and that it's maintained within accordance with these standards. And I appreciate council's approval last, for this budget year, for the $780,000, and went towards the second set of turnout gear, which is really helping us out. That project should conclude mid-year this year, but that's going to be a tremendous help for us to maintain that turnout gear in a ready state all the time. Appreciate that. So we cannot do what we do without a tremendous amount of relationships and partnerships throughout the community, the state, and actually federal government. Some of the key partners I'd like to highlight here are Buncombe County. We rely on Buncombe County, they rely on us for a lot of different service delivery. One of the keys is county dispatch. So Asheville Fire Department has a contract with Buncombe County to provide one dispatcher at the 911 center 24 hours a day. This is about a $212,000 contract, and it allows us to, we have one dispatcher solely committed just to Asheville Fire Department, to dispatch the calls that I mentioned earlier, and make sure that they're triaged correctly, and then make sure that our fire companies get out appropriately. So they're providing us all the information that they're getting from those 911 calls and getting us out the door. And there's also a connectivity piece, as we go along, any requests we have, that sort of thing, goes through that dispatcher, and they make a lot of things happen. It's a great partnership that we have with them. We also have a partnership with Buncombe County Emergency Management. We dovetail with them, they provide a tremendous amount of support for, again, preparing for disasters and emergencies of large scale, also during the response piece, and also in the recovery piece, we work with them. They have specific roles, and we have specific roles as it relates to emergency management. We work with them every day. Then EMS responses, I mentioned earlier, our partnership with Buncombe County. So these are rolled into EMS response are two distinct services. You have the transport service, and you have the first response service. So Buncombe County provides a transport service, which is the ambulance service. They staff, I believe, as nine ambulances a day throughout the county, throughout Buncombe County. And then, of course, we have our fire companies and our fire stations. So what Buncombe County provides is, on those life-threatening, well, on the joint responses, they provide the ambulance service that provides the transport piece to the hospital, which we do not provide. And then we provide the first response piece, because we're so strategically located throughout the community, we can respond much quicker, so that then we have a huge impact on patient outcomes, because we're able to get there quickly, begin a life-saving intervention, stabilize that patient, and have them prepared for transport once Buncombe County EMS arrives. There are some instances, say cardiac arrest, where we're performing CPR on a patient, where we may ride an ambulance to the hospital in support of the two paramedics that are on the ambulance. Another part of that partnership, the cost-sharing piece, is any equipment that we use on a, on an EMS incident is replaced by the equipment that's on the ambulance. So if we use a non, a tool for breathing for a patient, if we use one of those, then we will restock that with what's on the ambulance. And then when they get to the hospital, they then restock their ambulance.
Chris, can I ask you a question about that?
Yes, ma'am.
So is that a recent change, that the fire department only responds to life-threatening emergencies? I mean, in addition to fire? Because the, of course, the theory, or the, what you hear is, you know, well, the fire department goes out when anybody slips and falls.
Right.
Because we have a lot of, if you work downtown, you have a lot of sirens downtown.
Right.
So is that a, I didn't realize that the emergency response was so narrow. Is that, is that new?
We've been doing, it's called emergency medical dispatch, and approximately 10 years.
That's not new.
No, it's not new. Yeah.
But, I mean, when a call comes in, I mean, you're having to make a decision about whether it's life-threatening or not, I mean, they're going to err on the side, I would assume, of.
Exactly. So a lot of times, the 911 caller may think it's a lot worse than what they, of course, it's very traumatic, and they're not trained. So the EMD, Emergency Medical Dispatch Program, it trains those dispatchers to ask specific questions to get to that point. So it's not a perfect system, but it does weed out quite a few of those calls.
Okay.
So contracted fire services. We have several areas that join the city that are purchasing, excuse me, contracting with the, with Asheville Fire Department to provide fire protection services. There's three key, three main, three areas in total. The main, one of the ones you're probably most familiar with is the Biltmore State. So Asheville Fire Department is the primary service provider for all of Biltmore State, along with the Biltmore House. We're also the primary fire department for an area of Hall Creek that is not within the city, and then also an area of Chuns Cove Road that is not within the city. So they, they receive service just as the city of Asheville does, and in turn, those residents pay a separate fire tax, in addition to their Buncombe County tax, which provides revenue into the fire department to provide that service. So that's our contracted fire service areas. We also, excuse me, we have mutual aid agreements with our county, with all 24 Buncombe County fire departments, and this allows us to respond if needed into, into those areas, and then they also respond into us when it's needed. So in high-call volume times, we may get several fire departments cover our firehouses while we're busy on a large fire incident. We also have, in the areas adjoining the city, the fire, fire district, the county fire departments that are joining the city, we have what we call automatic aid agreements. And these aid agreements allow for kind of a blurring of the jurisdictional lines, so that we're able to respond into their area if we're closer, and then they can respond into our area if they're closer, so the resident, they don't care which one's coming, so they want to make, they just want quick service, just make sure that the closest unit is responding and taking care of that incident as quickly as possible. AB Tech and us work daily together. We're actually, today, we have a significant class going on with AB Tech, and they provide a partnership where we are able to, they help us to fund instructor pay and that sort of thing. They also provide for equipment and training facilities for us to train our firefighters. We also, I mentioned our recruit academy earlier, they are heavy support, they support us heavily in that program, paying for most of the instruction, and along with the equipment and the location. And Buncombe County Emergency Services Training Center is also a big piece of that, that training program. So we're daily working with AB Tech. And then Red Cross provides a service, a lot of services to us. Two of the main ones I'll highlight are, after a fire or disaster, as many of, as you, I'm sure know, they respond to the incident scene, we request them, and they provide food, shelter, clothing, even money to folks who have lost everything in a house fire or in some other disaster, and help those folks get back on their feet. So it's a huge service that they provide, that we work with them to help make happen. A more recent initiative is our fire alarm program, where we are partnering with them to install fire alarms during campus events. So we'll go into a neighborhood with multiple firefighters, multiple Red Cross volunteers, and we'll actually install smoke detectors and smoke alarms in homes that need them. And to date, within about the past year or so, we've installed over 500 smoke alarms in that manner. It's just been a great program, super successful. We continue to work with them on that. That's just a key highlight of key partners, key highlight, a good overview of our key partners that we work with daily. Staying into our budget, our total budget this year is 25.4 million. We have FTE count of over 260 people. So as Tony mentioned earlier, our most valuable resource is what gets most of our, our budget. 88% of that goes to our staffing, which leaves about 12% or $3 million, a little over $3 million, to operate the fire department on. Getting into that a little bit deeper, these five line items equate to half of our, about half of our total operating budget. I mentioned the 911 dispatch center already, the PPE, or the personal protective equipment, as we operate, we find that this line continues to increase, because we're having to maintain and repair and purchase new turnout gear more often, and so that we're seeing more cost involved with maintaining our turnout gear. And the other one I want to highlight is our fleet maintenance program. So this includes maintaining all of our fire trucks, along with our, along with the small vehicles as well. So in this budget year, we were able to trim about $100,000 off of this number from last year, because of the infusion of three new apparatus over the past year. The newest one just came online. So we should see a significant, well, $100,000 decrease in that fleet maintenance line, which is due to that new apparatus. Our overall current fleet age is 10 years old, so it's, we're hopeful that we can continue with an apparatus replacement program that continues to help us to reduce the cost of the maintenance of those vehicles, because as these vehicles get older, they incur more maintenance, and that's really what drives that cost. So here's our prior year spending trends. As you can see, our salary and benefits have pretty steadily increased. There's a little bit bigger of a bump last year, and it's, that's for the, well, you'll see about 3% change from salary and benefits over, over the term there. And then last year, in 2007, I believe, as y'all know, our firefighters don't pay social security. So in '07, there was a, for, there was an additional retirement benefit extended by council to our firefighters, which was a 2% match. And then last year, council approved an additional 2% match starting in January, so that brought the total to 4%. And then this year, beginning in January, y'all have approved an additional 2%, which will finish that program out at 6%, which was the goal back in '07. So there'll be a 6% match for our firefighters in an additional fund, and that is, drove some of that increase. You'll also see the operating budget increased significantly as well, and a big part of that was that fleet maintenance piece, and also the PPE trending upwards. That's creating more cost for us, our turnout gear.
So is there a question? Are those one-time then? Are those, are those one-time expenditures that you said that are going up here that we'd expect maybe for the next year would be, would be less?
Well, they're not one-time, but they're not, they'll be recurring, but not every year.
The operating, so the, so the PPE, that's, the 218 was, that's a recurring expense each year?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Our fleet maintenance, as we add new apparatus, we should see some leveling off and hopefully decrease in that, that line, but the PPE I envision continuing to increase.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we got to watch our time. You guys are one of our biggest departments, so we're letting you hog some more time.
Apologize. I'll try to speed it up. So we already spoke about the enhanced retirement program, and how y'all provide an additional 2% this year, which will increase total to six. The $780,000 infused into the, this year, infused in this budget for the additional turnout gear for the second set, and then replacement of H-fire trucks as we move forward, continue with that program to replace our oldest apparatus. So some department challenges, overtime has been a consistent challenge that we've had for years. This past year, I'm happy to report, is the first year in a long time that we've come in at budget, so we were, we managed that effectively. Some of the ways that we have done that is through coordinating our recruit school graduation earlier, so that allows us to get our newest firefighters online on fire trucks prior to the end of May, which is when our peak vacation season begins, which drives the overtime. So if we, if we fall below the 64, our minimum staffing level 64, then overtime gets used, so that we hire somebody back to fill that void. So that's where our overtime, that's where we incur most of our overtime. Natural disasters, other large-scale emergencies, being prepared for those is imperative for us, because they, they have a tendency to visit us. So with flooding and that sort of thing, so equipment to handle that is expensive and drives our budget significantly. Also, the overtime cost of up-staffing and being prepared as we encounter, like Hurricane Florence last week, we up-staffed the fire department, made sure we had plenty of resources on hand to take care of any issues that we may encounter. We've also deployed down east as well, supporting the Hurricane Florence response. So those, those create some challenges for us. And then our fire station conditions, we have, I think, two fire stations that have been built since 19, mid-1970s, so our stations have a lot of age on them. And being a 24/7 operation with as much use as they get, it continues to cause maintenance challenges, and so that's an issue that we continually face as we move forward, is keeping our stations open, along with the equipment that's inside of the station. So 24/7 operation, we're constantly using everything in the building, so everything from our chairs to beds to our exhaust capture systems, they're constantly being used, our doors, so they, that creates maintenance issues for us as well. So our goals for this fiscal year and beyond, continue to work hard with HR to enhance our recruitment strategies, so that we continue to diversify our workforce, continue to develop our staff, so that we have the best-trained firefighters that you can find, and the best leaders that you can find, and we continue to develop them, so that they're ready for that next step in their, their career, when the next position above them vacates, so we're working hard on succession planning, having it prepared. We focus heavily on employee wellness. Mental wellness has been a huge focus for us the past few years. As you can imagine, the trauma that our firefighters see every day can become burdensome to their mental health. So we have several programs, we worked hard with HR to increase the ability to give them tools to help manage that. with HR to increase the ability to give them tools to help manage that along with their families. And that's, we're having a lot of success there, and we appreciate that walk in hand in hand with human resources in that role. And also in our physical health and wellness, everything from physical fitness to, we provide annual physicals to all of our firefighters, which obviously has a budgetary impact, but it.
Chris, on the, on the mental wellness, are those, are those programs co-offered with the police department as well? So are they, are they just specifically for the fire department?
Some things are, we work a lot with the police department as far as our critical incident stress management programs. And then we have some things that are just in the fire department, and some things are citywide. That's our EAP program and things like that, employee assistance. And then we're accredited, we're very proud of that. As we hope everyone is, we're one of a little over 200 fire departments in the, in the world that are CFAI accredited, Commission on Fire Accreditation International. We work hard to make sure we're maintaining all the standards that are required for that. We also, this past year, were awarded an ISO Level 2, which was an improvement from our ISO Level 3, which has an impact on our city's residents with insurance rates, especially the business community at that level. So with that, I'll take questions that you may have.
Anybody have any question? Oh, you have a question. Oh, I thought you were saying new question.
No, no. Thanks for this, Chris.
Yes, ma'am.
So what it sounds to me like is, in western North Carolina, I mean, our department is, has probably the most specialized services, for example, Swift Water. And we get reimbursed for that when, when it's used outside of the city, et cetera. But I also assume that when people are tra, when fire personnel are trained in, you know, various hazmat or Swift Water or whatever, their base salary is higher than a fire, fire personnel that doesn't have all that training. Have we actually analyzed the cost of having all those specialized services compared to what we get reimbursed by either other municipalities, the state and, and federal versus, you know, looking at the idea of buying that on an as-needed basis? I mean, because it's kind of a decision, because I would imagine that smaller municipalities in western North Carolina make the decision not to have a Swift Water rescue, but they probably have rivers. Or, you know, they make the decision not to have hazmat-trained folks because they're relying on Asheville to do that for them. But have we, have we really sat back and like analyzed that and decided that, that that's the right way to staff the fire department?
So part of our accreditation looks at that. As we, as we evaluate each of the programs that we deliver, we evaluate each program as a, as a piece of that. Another piece, as it relates, I don't know if this will exactly answer your question, but as it relates to reimbursements. So if we respond, then we get paid back the exact cost, including benefits for that member outside of the city. Inside of the city, the only teams that actually incur an additional cost are our hazmat teams, and that's part of the state reimbursement, pays for a 2%, I think it's 2% is what they get as a, so our Swift Water team, they don't get, our members of that team don't get an additional pay increase for being on a team. The only team that gets that is the hazmat team. So really, the cost is, of course, equipment. We share some of that with Buncombe County, and I didn't mention that Buncombe County has a USAR task force, which we're a piece, Urban Search and Rescue, which the state helps to fund through grants. And they, we share resources with them, and people, and education. So part of the, when we send somebody to train in Buncombe County, the task force may be able to reimburse us for the cost of that training. They may even pay for the backfill that it takes to fill that position. So I don't know if we've specifically done exactly what you've asked, but I think the other part is the, the size of Asheville and, and our location is we're somewhat remote. So there's not a Charlotte nearby that is within response time of, if we have a Swift Water emergency, we can't rely on them to provide that service. So it's one of those things we kind of, I think we need to provide to our residents quickly. So I don't know if I exactly answered your question.
Well, I, I, you know, just maybe, well, put, I'd love to see that analysis, maybe in the finance and HR, just because I, I do feel like we are possibly offering services to our neighboring communities at, at our citizens' cost.
Okay. You'll be happy to present something to you at that committee.
That'd be great. And I know, I, I asked several questions that I know I'm, we're going to get the answers to, but one of them, I'm just curious to ask here, is why is y'all's pay cycle different than everybody else's?
Good question. So the fire departments are one of the few entities by Fair Labor Standards Act that can have a longer pay cycle because of the 24-hour shifts. So our pay cycle can be up to 28 days, which is currently where it's at. And that's the legislation that allows that to occur. And I'm beyond that, that's.
So I assume that's less expensive for us to pay you less frequently?
Yes, ma'am, because of the overtime that's incurred over that, the overtime is less because it's, has to be earned in that 28-day period, and it's based on the amount of hours they work in, in that period. But they are treated differently than all the other folks who are on a 14-day cycle.
Right, right, right. Okay, thanks.
Which has an impact on staff.
I wanted to go back to when you were speaking about contracted services, and you mentioned areas that aren't in the city limits that they pay tax for the service. I was wondering, in the case of the Biltmore Estate, what, what is the terms of their contract? What do they pay for us providing fire service?
I think it is in the. Hold on just a second, I think. Is the PDF that lives down here? I don't know exactly right now, but I'll get that answer for you. Send it out to, I think it's around 250. Best recollection is about 250,000 is what Biltmore State pays us.
Is that charges, so there's charges for services from Haw Creek, from Skyland? I don't see Biltmore on here, but.
It's the Skyland one, I believe.
That's $206,000. Does that sound about right?
Yeah, the one that's the Skyland. It's projected to be 206,000. It was 205.
Okay.
Just so everybody knows, the spreadsheets are in a slightly different location on our website. So just, the presentations are attached to the regular agenda, but the spreadsheets are under the budget session agenda. Any other questions of council? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so not everyone can take that long. So let's see. Who, who's, who's next? What order are y'all doing this in?
I think Dawa's next.
How quickly?
Make up the time.
I'll make up the time, I'll be concise. All right, if I can get to my presentation. Well, thank you, Mayor and council members, Dawa Hitch, Communication and Public Engagement Director. And I appreciate the opportunity to share a little bit about our department today and kind of the everyday inner workings of what we do in service to the city. So our, our core services are highlighted here in blue. And, and right at the very center of those is the box that says Community Engagement and Partnerships. And that, it's important that it's there in the center because that really signifies the approach and the mission that our department has, basically why we exist. And at the, at the end of the day, that's because we want to effectively engage all of our residents in the decisions that impact their day-to-day lives. That, that's what, that's what is underlying the work that we come to do every day. So making, making those decision-making opportunities, those opportunities to participate accessible to everybody. And so to do that, we've got a couple of different approaches that we take. We've got certainly working with the media, that's one area. We also have our relationships that we manage, and they are really one of the most important and impactful things that we can do to reach our community and, and build trust, build relationships, and encourage people to participate. So in that area, that's where we've got our Neighborhood and Community Engagement Manager. We've got a person that is devoted solely to building those relationships, taking the information that we have about the policy decisions, about the way tax dollars are being spent, about our operations, taking that information and going out to the community to share it with people. So that might be Neighborhood Association meetings, there might be stakeholder groups that are coming together around a certain topic. And, and our intention there is to go to people and share information and allow a dialogue to develop so that there can be better understanding. So, so that approach, the relationship approach complements the media approach. I won't spend a lot of time on that. I think everybody knows, we've got radio, broadcast, print media, and then social media as well. And, and believe it or not, there, most people in this day and age get their news from Facebook. That, that's a, there's data out there. Is anybody surprised? There's data out there that supports that. So, so recognizing that, that we've got to be available and accessible to all of those different areas is, is one of our priorities. And you'll see that through the mediums that we support, both Facebook, Twitter, blog. We've got our city website, that's part of our department's work. And it's through those, those means that we can push information. We've also got some technology-based opportunities to have two-way communication. So that's both sharing information and then providing opportunities for people to give input and feedback back to us to inform decisions, right? So a way to do that is the public hearing. That's one of the tools that we have. And we also know, based on what we learned through our community profile, that our community has a large group of people that are in the millennial age. So a huge part of effective communication and effective engagement is understanding your environment, understanding the people that you're working with, and doing your best to speak their language. So recognizing that, we've invested time and energy in some online opportunities for people to engage in decision-making processes. And, and one of those is through our Open City Hall tool. So there we are again. It's all about engagement. What we can't forget is that the biggest impact that we have is through people. So our external communication is just as important as our internal communication because it's when our staff members are well-informed and understand the direction of council, where we're trying to go as a city, what the priorities are, how things are happening. When, when they're out there serving the community and can share information, again, we've got more of a chance of people retaining that information because it's relationship-based. So another core service of our department is working on internal communication. So that's managing the Intranet, which is our internal resource for staff to get everything from policies to updates on training opportunities within the organization, reminders about things like a civil service board election, which is happening today. Those are the kinds of things that you'll see on the Intranet and that internal communication arm. Another thing besides kind of pushing information in the internal realm, and the internal meaning within, with, with city staff, is we work with every single department in the area of strategic communication and engagement. So, so we work with departments in putting together communication and engagement plans. That allows us to make sure that we are reaching as wide of an audience as possible. That takes us back to the idea that different people have different preferences. And, and we know that because we invest time and energy there. So some neighborhoods, like List serves, some neighborhoods like Nextdoor, some neighborhoods have Facebook groups, some neighborhoods have email distribution lists that they prefer, some have printed newsletters that they prefer. So really, understanding those preferences and then understanding our community's broader preferences based on things like what we know about different age groups and their preferences allows us to really maximize how many people we are, we're reaching. So, so those are the core services. And then there are different functional areas within each of those that are pretty specific, kind of based on technology. And, and that would be our audiovisual production, graphic design services, marketing campaigns, and then we run our government channel as well. So to recap real quick, we've got our media relations, we've got our people relations in the community, we've got social media, we've got our website, and then we've got our online and in-person public engagement efforts that we helped coordinate. And that's because we know that we have a community that is very much more engaged than others. We know that from the citizen survey, year after year. I think that's something that we should, I hope we're all proud of, that we've got a community that cares. Not every, not every community has that luxury, you know? They're trying to get people out to get engaged. So, so knowing that people care about getting engaged is really, that puts us a little bit ahead. And we've got to be careful that we don't exhaust the community. And, and what we've heard from the community is, I've given you my opinion about all of these things, all right? And then I feel like nothing's getting done. So what, what is going on there? Why should I come back out for this engagement effort? Because I've told you 10 times over the last 10 years, what's important to me, what's important to my neighborhood. So what we're finding, and we'll get to that in our challenges, is that we've got to have a more coordinated approach. Because honestly, the community sees us all, all, all of our, 15 of our departments and two additional offices, as the city of Asheville, right? They, they don't necessarily care as much as about this is a parks and rec planning effort, or this is a planning and urban design effort. So the more that we can package all that together, that means the less we have to ask people to keep interrupting their day-to-day life and coming out to meetings. And that provides more opportunity to report back on how previous input has been used in the decisions that we're making. So that coordination piece, again, is up there in the internal communication strategy, and it's very important. It's where we spend a lot of time. So mandates and legal requirements. Our biggest one is our PEG funding. Because we have met a certain threshold for original programming on our government television station, that makes us eligible for an additional about $30,000 a year. So that is an area where we definitely commit resources because it allows us to stretch our dollar in the production equipment that we need to do our broadcasting. Our key partners, we work very closely with the leadership team. Again, we've got folks that are, and that are dedicated to each department to make sure that they've got re, communication resources and coordinated engagement resources for the work that they're doing. We work closely with all local media outlets, including local bloggers as well. We try to make ourselves as accessible as we can be. And then the community, and that's evident in our engagement efforts. And again, that can be anywhere from just informing people about what we're doing to consulting with people, you know, we're thinking about this, what do you think, what do you think about that? Do you have any other ideas? To efforts like our citizen survey, which is a sci, statistically significant survey that we do every few years to get an idea of how satisfied our community is with the city's services. So more on that coming in October, a full presentation. I look forward to sharing that with you all. So like, we, we are a very small department. So you, you heard from FIRE, a very big department. We are a very small department. And, and like most departments, most of our money is in the area of people. We've got seven full-time staff members, and then there are two, two or, there are two other staff people that we work with regularly who sit in as part of our team and are parts of the, of other departments. What are our budget drivers? So dues and subscriptions and contracted services are our two biggest areas. And, and I do think it's important to explain a little bit about that dues and subscriptions, because I'm, I'm sure that that looks pretty large to a lot of people. We do a lot of software as a service. We have a lot of subscription services, and that falls in that category. So that would be things like our, the newsletter program that we use every year. We've got subscription services where, that allow us to, it scans our website to make sure there aren't broken links and that there aren't misspelled words. So we've got some resources in that area that we use to help kind of expand, to maximize the resources that we have. We rely on technology. Contracted services, some in the area of graphic design, it's pretty small every year, only about $5,000. And some of our, usually each year, we've got a pretty big project. Sometimes that's website redesign, sometimes that is a citizen survey. So those things fall in that contract. So those things fall in that contracted services category as well. Spending trends, there was a bump. Council had a connected and engaged community as a priority, has for a number of years. And you can see in fiscal year 16 that more resources were added to the department to help us grow the reach that, the capacity that we have to meet all of these always-changing communication tools that we have out there. No, no budget changes from last year. Some of the challenges we face, again, that is coordinating community engagement. And again, that's a bit of what I was talking about before, knowing that we can fatigue. I mean, it's possible to fatigue the community and not have as good participation if you have so many efforts back-to-back-to-back-to-back where you're asking people to come out, interrupt their day-to-day life, and come to a community meeting. So working with the entire organization to kind of look at that a different way is a challenge and an opportunity. One way that a positive, positive impact that we're having in that way is the upcoming budget engagement that we're doing. That's a big priority for us this year. Council has definitely made that a priority and has been supportive of that. And we're looking forward to that effort. And we also have lots of bond projects. I think everybody knows that we've got coming down the line, that need to have engagement with them. So as we're looking at going out into the community in different areas, we're looking at combining in some of those neighborhood-based engagement efforts and then rolling all that into one night. So people can come, give input about whatever sidewalk project, street project might be happening in their neighborhood, and then we'll roll into the engagement, the budget engagement after that. So making some progress there. Then another challenge is to provide proactive communication during crises. And that can be any kind of crises. It can, they can be high-profile issues, things that happen within the city that, you know, we hope had gone a different way, and the community has a lot of understandable feelings about that, and it's a hot topic of communication. Social media is very active, and we've just got limited capacity to track all of that and provide all the support in that area and still keep everything else going that we've got going on, all the day-to-day communication and then the project-based communication and engagement. So that's a challenge that we recognize. Maintaining staff knowledge of new tools and techniques. Again, we've got, so for those seven people, they're in, we've got three or four pretty different disciplines. Website design is very different than graphic design and video production. So with a pretty small training budget, making sure that we're up to speed on all the latest and greatest opportunities to engage, the technology that goes along with that is a bit of a challenge. Department goals. So real-time streaming of committee meetings, that's one of our goals. And for anybody watching today, I just wanted to say, if there is any confusion about the finance committee not being streamed, I apologize. We are definitely in the beginning stages of figuring out how we're going to make all this work with the people that we have. And Tuesdays, when we are broadcasting meetings, we've got one person that does our graphic design, video production, and runs a television station. And we are really at capacity on Tuesdays to add that additional streaming. So once we get the kinks out technology-wise, then our plan is to train other staff members, and then they'll be able to run that stream for those meetings. So we are excited about streaming council committee meetings. And by the end of the year, that should be rolling very smoothly. We also are investing some time and resources in really marketing council's vision. You know, that's something that we have had as a priority, and then other things have risen to the top over the last few years. We've got resources dedicated to that, so we're looking forward to that effort. This year, we will also, by the end of the year, have interpretive services at community meetings that are citywide and sponsored by the city. So that's where we're starting. So if we're inviting all the city to a, to a community meeting, we will have signing services, sign language services, and we will also have language services. They'll just be there, they'll be part of what people can expect when they walk into the door. Smaller meetings, we'll still have to ask people to request services, but we're looking forward to the accessibility that that particular goal will provide. And then also developing a plan. This year, we'll have a plan developed for childcare options at community meetings. So we do that as much as we can, but we have not operationalized that. And that is something that we definitely want to spend the time to do because we know that is a barrier to people participating, again, in the decisions that impact their daily lives. And that, that's a wrap.
So do you want to have any questions for Donald?
Okay.
Yeah. Do people take advantage of those childcare services?
Sometimes. Sometimes.
And one other question. You had mentioned that you have one person that does the streaming and the graphic design and the TV production. How, is that, is there another position needed? Or just out of curiosity, is that person...
Is there another?
Yeah.
We just need to duplicate Dan.
Right, right. We need another Dan.
Double, double Dan.
I know, he's down there running the switch. We do, we do need additional resources, and that is a request that has been made. That was a request that was made last year. And there are lots, but there's a limited amount of money and lots of priorities. So we do look at creative ways to kind of get to where we need to go with other departments. And last year, that was with the Equity Office. There were new positions added there, and we'll be working in close collaboration with them. So we, we do need more capacity, that is true. And when other priorities rise above that, we figure out how to make it work with what we have.
All right. And I just, I, again, this is one of the questions I asked, but I think I know everybody, I think I know four of your seven people, the communication specialists. Who are those three people?
So that's Ashley Trainum-Carson and Christina Hollingsy, who's the Police Department, AP, or PIO, and Polly McDaniel.
And then, so who's the communication coordinator?
That's Christie Edwards, who right now, again, creative solutions to our capacity needs. It's also serving a communication specialist role. She has taken on, she is working directly with Parks and Recreation. They've got so much coming out with all their bond projects. She's been working with that department. She also runs the website.
Great, thanks.
Over the last three years, we didn't give us much money on external programming and outreach, but for fiscal year 2019, it's kind of hiked to $4,000. What's changed?
Recognizing that we've got to make our, well, one, we didn't always have the external programming line item. So a lot of times, any, if we were providing some level of food for a community meeting, that would have come out of our training line item. And so a few years ago, the external programming was initiated there. We originally had some money scheduled there for a Citizen Academy, and that idea struggled to really take root. And so now, we've really been focusing on making our community meetings more engaging. So that's where some of the childcare services or food or that kind of thing is now being budgeted.
What was the idea behind, would you say, Citizen Academy, Community Academy?
Yeah, yeah. Some kind of, you know, we didn't, we were open to whatever the community wanted it to be. Lots of different cities do it lots of different ways, but it being a way for people to learn more about their government and to show up on a regular basis, form relationships, get to know council better, get to know city operations better, take field trips. And there's lots of different ways that could be. And we're still looking. I mean, our idea this year is, we've got some other ideas that are, that we're working on, but that's where that money originally was.
Just on that front, there are, there are, there's a group of groups that have come together, and you may know this, but they, there's a program called Democracy is Boring that they have started. I object to the name because I think democracy is super exciting.
Fascinating.
But, but my organization is a part of it, and they've done a number of open workshops for the community around, you know, sort of Civics 101 and budget, and, you know, it's along the same lines. And so, you know, I don't, I don't think that's something that needs to live and be owned, live in and be owned by the city. There are people, partners out there that are already doing it that I'm sure would love to have the city be a part of that and add to it.
That's great.
So if you want, I can send you more information about that.
Is it a little like our Citizens Police Academy concept?
Yeah, well, and we did, we did a Citizens Academy a long time ago. I mean, about, I can tell, at least about 10 years ago, we had something of the sort. And, and I was involved in it at some of those points, and I, it was boring. It was boring. I don't know that, you know, I'm a mom, and I'm trying to juggle all those things. I don't know that I would want to come sit through that. So we do have the challenge of, you don't have a lot of time, you want to make it engaging. What do people want? And meet them where they are.
Okay, any other questions? All right, so we, we are not keeping on our schedule at all here, but why don't we do Parks and Rec next, Rod, if you might, because I, we think it'll be the chunkiest one remaining.
Mayor, council, appreciate the opportunity this afternoon to go over our budget at a different level in terms of how we provide services, a little more detail than normally we get the opportunity to do. So I appreciate that opportunity. Our department is driven by four areas of focus that guide our department. When we look at the areas that we, our programming, look at community centers, neighborhood parks, youth programming, and equity and facility investments. In order to carry these focus areas out, we have 73 facilities, which include five community centers, two singer centers, three swimming pools, 54 parks, including greenways in those facilities. We also have capital responsibility for the golf course and McCormick Field.
Oh, there's some sound effects for this presentation.
The areas of programming that we use for those 54 parks and 73 facilities, we have outdoor recreation, which includes leisure programs that get citizens in touch with nature and those types of activities. Youth programming, which are center-based programmings, such as after-school programs, summer camp, and neighborhood-level programs. Equity investment in facilities. Two months ago, I presented to council how we look at those investments that we're looking at in the facilities to make sure that we are equitable with those. We've got community-wide programs, which are programs that are above a neighborhood level. These are programs, we do about 26 of them, like Movies in the Park, Easter, Strive the Ganza, and those types of programs. Greenway Trail Maintenance, of course, that's maintaining all the trail system throughout. Equity programming, programs that we do that's outside of normal programming. Example, we just rented space at the YW for neighborhood swim programs. Also, at the Nature Center, we offered a summer camp this summer for kids that wouldn't have that opportunity. So we use the funding for that to provide those extra programs to really drive those gaps in services. Therapeutic program, that's programming for our citizens with disabilities, youth and adults. We conduct programs that allow them access and opportunities to participate, such as adaptive bowling, cycling, wellness, and cooking classes, things like that, to also offer them recreational opportunities. An athletic program, that's youth and adult sports, basically just running the sports Mandates and legal requirement, there's no mandate or legal requirement to have a Parks and Recreation Department. It's one of those quality of life and community value issues that push departments forward. So when you're looking at economic development and citizens enjoying the quality of life within the city, it's a choice to offer Parks and Recreation Services and at what level you offer those services. Some of the key partners we have are friends at the Nature Center. They offer funding in terms of capital, major projects that we're doing. We also work with them, the Lord of Subsidy, at the Nature Center. Asheville City Schools, using joint facilities so that we're not duplicating facilities throughout the community. We're allowed to use their facilities and they use ours. That way, we keep from having, making those major investments in facilities. Sports league and associations, those are the leagues and associations that we work in conjunction with to offer additional programming from what staff can provide. Community groups and organizations are the same outside of the sports. These are organizations that help us enhance the programming level that we offer. I'd like to mention that with these key partners, we do not offer any direct funding for any of these key partners. A lot of these agreements are for facility use and for them to offer the programs in return for using those facilities, so they make it accessible to all residents and all ages. Over budget, overview, looking at our operating costs, the salaries, once again, is the biggest driver with the benefits and salaries. Human capital is our major expense. The operating budget helps carry out those. We have $10 million overall budget and 94 employees that helps carry out those services. Five budget drivers, as you can see, these are the major ones in the department. Salaries, on the other screen, salaries was a major one. Contracted services on this one is a huge line item that we have. 73% is for maintenance activities, which part of council goal is looking at how we bring those in-house to add to it versus contracting out. That's a study that we're going through now, looking at the different ways we can bring some of those services in-house. As you can see, it's a big budget driver for us. These five areas make up about 25% of our overall budget. Our trends prior year trending, as you can see, our department has stayed pretty flat over the years. Part of that is reallocating resources within our existing budget to meet some of the goals and mandates that we have to, based off of the community needs. So we haven't asked for a lot of additional resources. We just kind of reallocate because, once again, there's nothing mandated that we have to do. So we created a look at how we can stay within the budget the council adopts without expanding in those areas and still meet the goals of the community. Budget changes, within the budget, there's one change this past year. Council approved the budget with positions at the Nature Center in a turn of the increased attendance covering the cost of adding those positions to help with the attendance increase and also the new exhibit that's coming on at the Nature Center.
The pandas?
Red pandas.
Red pandas. That's what you mean.
Yeah, and the front entrance, the red pandas in the front entrance. We have two of those projects coming on at the same time. Some of the, some of the challenges that we have is funding to maintain existing facilities and infrastructure, capacity to support new investments that's made over time, and funding for programs and facilities that address racial equity. Part of what we're trying to do is utilizing the equity in asset investments, programming policies, and partnerships to foster that racial equity action plan that I presented to council two months ago.
That was a mouthful. Yes.
Some of the department goals that jump out for our department, completing neighborhood recreational service plans. And these service plans are looking at impacts on the neighborhood and some of the issues at a lower level versus having an overall master plan. One of the goals is, in the East End neighborhood, for instance, we're having impacts on the neighborhood from community use of facilities. So how do we work with them to implement some type of impact policy that number of rest days between events? How, what does that look like? And how do we get to that point so that the neighborhood voices are heard? And the only way we feel like we can get that is having these neighborhood recreational plans because every neighborhood have different issues that need to be addressed with that. And the bond projects. Our department was the, was the department that received the most yes and the less no votes. And we feel that it's a mandate from the community that we finish our bond projects on time and on budget because that's the expectation of the community. So that's our goal as well. So with that, any questions? I'll be happy to answer.
Okay, wait. Okay. Go ahead.
So some of these are follow-up to the questions I asked before.
So we, so we, as a council, had an opportunity to submit questions to staff after we got the preliminary or the initial reports, and some of those questions have been answered via email, so just background there.
So the, the swim program at the YW, it's my understanding that the YW actually provides the personnel as well as the, so they're actually doing the programming.
We rent the space from them as any other group that would come to a facility.
And, and we don't, they don't provide any personnel?
Yeah, as far as a rental, just like if someone is coming to rent our facility, we would have personnel on site. So in order, in order to not have staff provide that, we rent the space for them to make it use for the community.
Okay. So I would have expected to see that... Okay. So I would have expected to see that program on the inventory list for the agreements and partnerships, and it wasn't there.
The budget, yeah, the budget book is, we're trying to get that aligned. There's some things in the budget book that we're still, over the last few years, the budget office have been trying to get things streamlined. And this is one of those years that we're trying to get everything in line. But hopefully next year we'll be able to capture a lot of those.
Okay. And then I asked about the Pac Square Park and whether we owned, whether the city owns all of Pac Square Park. And the answer was Buncombe County owns one of the parcels that make up Pac Square Park. And the city does not receive any funding for maintenance from Buncombe County. What, how big of a parcel does Buncombe County own? And why are they not paying maintenance fees? Or why are we maintaining it on their behalf?
Correct. I can look up the parcel. I don't know if that's.
But is it big or is it tiny?
I think the partnership agreement with Buncombe County regarding Pac Square Park might veer outside of Parks and Rec in origination. Just so, because they contributed, what was it, $2 million to the, and we did not initially, although by default we had to because we had a defaulting contractor.
But they had agreed originally to help us maintain the park.
It was a third, it was supposed to be a third, a third, a third with the.
Now it's zero, 100%.
I think, I'm thinking it's 0, 0, 100.
But it wasn't really a Parks and Rec agreement.
The Pac Square is a servency dissolved. They were no longer, they were supposed to be raising money for the endowment and raising money for maintenance every year. And when that happened, the city stepped in, because once again, the park falls onto us. The county, under an agreement, verbal agreement, agreed to help with the maintenance costs. Over the last few years, the county has reduced that. To the last few years, they haven't provided any funding. But there's never was a formal agreement saying that they will provide X number of funding. It was kind of just a mutual conversation.
Well, let's fence it off.
Or just stop mowing it.
Yeah, and council, when the park first opened, because of the $2 million gap, council wasn't willing to approve any type of agreement until the funding, until the city was made whole. So that's.
So we, and that.
So we ended up not getting any money.
Well, because that never happened. I mean, so we'd have to reintroduce the conversation with the county.
And we have to be careful, because they may then fence off that little piece of land that they own between First and Second Bay is on the Monford baseball field.
Well, and I would offer, there are actually a lot of other facilities where we have cross-ownership. So if we want to start down that road, I mean, I fear opening that can of worms. For example, they own a patch right in the middle of where Monford Park players perform. So I'm not.
Well, but I think, I mean, again, this is a conversation that we've had in the Finance Committee. And I think what I'd like to see is, all of these agreements, we put it all in one place, and we sit at the table. Because I get that, you know, this is here and this, and it's going to be one-offs. But it also feels like, you know, we're just kind of kicking the can down the road. And it's sometimes an odd relationship.
And in addition to that with the school system, because you have a lot of, there are some interesting agreements, I think, with the school system as well regarding our facilities.
And then, and just so you know, the status of the U.S. Tennis Grant, I spoke today with, who'd I, oh, Jeff Joyce. And he said he'd follow up with the U.S. Tennis Association about that grant funding. And then my other question, that maybe I missed this in the presentation, and I apologize if that's the case. But the Riverside Cemetery, how much is coming out of the general fund for operating the cemetery?
Do you want to tell people about how we, our relationship to, the city's relationship to Riverside Cemetery?
Riverside Cemetery is just another facility that we maintain.
We own the land.
We own the land, everything. It's one of those community, public cemeteries that any citizen can go and get a gravesite, a plot site there. So it's not private in nature. We've always managed it. We used to have a full-time staff out there. We now have scaled back the last six years where we have staff out there with some seasonal staff that operated it and actually offer those services for families that need it.
So how much money out of the general fund?
It's within our park operations. We don't pull it out separately. In the budget book, it used to be listed separately. And that's one of those things that we're trying to clean up as well. But it's included in our overall maintenance and operations of the facilities.
Well, I think it'd just be interesting to look at the operation of that facility and relook at, you know, how much you're charging per plot or whatever. Because it's kind of an unusual thing for a city. It's my understanding for a city to be providing cemeteries. Maybe not, though.
So Gwen, the budget detail that we have does have a, there is a number, a line item for Riverside Cemetery that's 30, you know, $29, $30,000.
But that's just for the head count.
You're correct. It doesn't cover all of the expenses at the cemetery. We would have to break that out separately.
The head count, not the head count.
Some of those, over the last five years, over the last five years, we've been looking to try to manage the costs and look at how we're allocating dollars within our department and to be able to track them better. So this is just one of those illustrations where we're moving to the next level to be able to do that. Riverside, it was a holdover, because we used to have separate budgets for each one of these units. And now we're trying to get to a place where we can track the dollars for each. But I can break out Riverside for you.
I mean, I think that's been something we've been working on over the years. It's harder than you think to drill down on the actual costs of different facilities. I mean, I know, I think practically I had to have a forensic audit to figure out what the Nature Center truly costs to study, for example. So I know, especially in Parks and Rec, because sometimes I feel like things just get landed there. And we don't, you know, we're paying for capital out of one fund, and we're paying operational out of another, and personnel out of another. So that's a little difficult to unwind.
But I can bring that to Finance Committee.
And then the only other question I had, and I think maybe this is flipped around a couple times, but how do we decide what department is going to maintain? Because, maintain these various facilities? Because I thought that there were some things that were handled by streets, no, or Public Works.
Yeah, it's, you got general services that handle anything that's dealing with the structure of the facilities. We handle all of the maintenance. Public Works, you know, when it comes to sidewalk infrastructure, anything with the park.
So they don't do mowing?
No. We handle all of the mowing. Some of the fire stations, the firefighters handle those. And then there may be one or two different parcels that Public Works may. The right-of-way mowing is handled by Public Works, because they just have the safety equipment and the manpower to do the right-of-way mowing. But anything outside of that, we handle.
Okay.
And that's one of those services we're trying to bring back in-house versus having contracted out. And we spend a lot of money contracting out these services where we probably could do it more efficient and affordable in terms of operating through the department. But years ago, when we had the budget reduction and the recession, we kind of looked at how we can operate different. And outsourcing was the way to go there.
And I've got just one quick question. I realize I ask a bunch, but I'll wait to get the answers to most of those in writing. But the one I wanted to ask is, about two years ago, those of us on the Finance Committee had a joint meeting with the Recreation Board, where y'all were talking, there was a consultant, and y'all were talking about fees that you were going to charge and putting all the programs on a scale and looking at, you know, should we charge more for some and less for others? And did that, have there been adjustments to that fee structure based on that conversation?
Right now, Ashton Park is one of those that was on the fee schedule that we're looking at. The Nature Center made some adjustments. Our recreation programs, based off of the program in the nature, where it landed on that sliding scale, we have implemented.
You have made those adjustments. Okay.
Correct. And part of that, too, is allocating the cost of services. Within that matrix, we look at each facility and what it was cost to maintain them. So that way we can break it out. And that's what we're trying to match now in our budget, especially with priority-based budgeting. How do we get our line items to look exactly? So when you look at the budget, you know exactly what's in there. And that's one reason why we pulled out the equity, you see the equity programming, so that we can track those dollars and say, here's the goals and here's what we've measured, achievable measurements from implementing that money and spending that money, that we can track it a lot better with that.
I just want to flag, I didn't realize this until this process, until tonight, actually, that outside of police, fire, and water, Parks is our biggest department in terms of number of people and budget. So that, you know, I just, I don't know, that made, that may be, that was surprising. That was, I mean, pleasantly surprising.
Lots of facilities.
Yeah. Yeah. So I'm happy we're putting money there.
Thanks.
Thanks, Roderick. I do want to say on that note, you know, several years ago, we tried to do a concept where we merged our Parks and Rec Department with the county. And we created an independent authority that would have its own revenue stream dedicated to that service. And it was a great idea. And we worked really, really hard. And we had many meetings with county commissioners to work on the details of that. But it depended upon legislation to make it work. And in the end, well, we ended up in a small skirmish with our local legislators at the time. And we were removed from that legislation at somewhat, at the 11th hour. But one of the reasons I thought it was so important is that it is a service that cities and counties provide that doesn't get a lot of attention. It's treated more like the elastic good, because you're trying to provide basic services first, police, fire, and patch and potholes and things like that. And you think, well, we'll just scoop Parks and Rec down the funding list, because that's not an emergency. And then what happens is Parks and Rec gets underfunded. And it really does contribute to people's quality of life, and they depend upon it. I mean, for very basic things like childcare, after-school care, and summer camps, but also to just, you know, for their enjoyment in their life, getting around and staying in good health and just enjoying your city. So, and Roderick wants to add one thing. But anyway, I just would like to just rehash that horrible, time-consuming experience that didn't get us where we needed to be. And so here we are.
Sorry, Mayor. One thing I forgot to mention, one of the big-ticket items we're going to have coming up is rat tip maintenance. So when you mentioned maintenance, I meant to talk about it in my slide. But when those facilities come on, the maintenance budget and the staff to maintain those, not just at the basic level, but the community expectation, is going to be a big price tag. So I just wanted to throw it out for Council.
That's code for time to give Parks and Rec back to the county, right?
Only kidding.
But they once had Parks and Rec. I'm just saying, spread the love. All right. That was an excellent job of catching up on some of our time. Our goal is to finish this work session at quarter till so that we have enough time to turn over before the council meeting. We are going to do HR now. And then what do we have after this one?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and other council members, Jamie Joyner, I'm the interim HR Director, and interim.
We're going to identify the people that are actually permanent, and they'll be, that'll be unique.
There you go.
We'll add permanent to their title.
So I'll tell you about the Human Resources Department. There. Okay. We'll start with the core services. Employee relations is a core service for Human Resources. This ensures we are in compliance with city policies, as well as state and federal laws. The employee benefits management portion encompasses medical, dental, vision, 401K, 457, basic life insurance. It also covers our employee health center, as well as the Asheville Project and medical leaves for our employees. Compensation management ensures that we are competitive in the marketplace for a wide variety of employees, allowing us to attract and retain the best. This is an overview of the other services that we offer. And these services are part of our mission, which is to build a highly engaged, empowered, diverse workforce that is reflective of residents and focused on innovation, productivity, and organizational performance. We manage a full life cycle of an employee from their recruitment through the retirement process. It includes pay, benefits, and opportunities for growth and development. The mandates and legal requirements that Human Resources has to follow. A lot of our work is dictated by federal laws. These include Title VII of the Civil Rights Act, as well as the ADA, FMLA, FLSA, which has to do with wage and hour laws. Workers' compensation also plays a role in the work that we do. Additionally, there are state statutes that guide our work. It is worth mentioning that there is a property interest in employment that is created by our personnel policies. After successful completion of a probationary period, an employee can only be terminated for just cause. With that process, HR has to be involved. We have to provide notice to the employee of the deficiencies and have a pre-disciplinary conference with the department director. After those findings, if the employee is not satisfied, they can appeal to the city manager. And then if they're still not satisfied, they have the ability to appeal to our civil service board. This adds a layer of complexity as we guide and advise in concert with our legal department. Key partners, some of the other key partners that we've identified, they help us manage our health and dental insurance programs that are provided to employees and retirees. We do have retirees on our plans until they are Medicare eligible. We are self-insured, which means that we assume the risk on medical claims versus being self-insured. However, this allows us to have more control over our plan design and save the money by not having to pay the fixed associated costs of being fully insured. While we partner with all departments, some of the key departments that we collaborate with are Legal, Finance, and the Office of Equity and Inclusion. Overview of our budget, we're not unlike any of the other departments. We're salaries and benefits are composed quite a bit of our budget. The salary is about 61%. Benefits 26%. And our operating cost around 13%. This does include health services in this scenario as well. Some of the budget drivers in the Human Resources Department, as I mentioned earlier, the Civil Service Board, which is the quasi-judicial board, that has the authority to reinstate employees and overturn the city manager's decision. The attorney fees for that board are paid out of the HR budget. In our contracted services, it covers such things as the Affordable Care Act reporting that we have to do annually, as well as some document scanning and document shredding that we have. The training, of course, is for our employees. And hiring and promotion covers our applicant tracking system that we have, that we utilize when we onboard people, as well as our background checks. And that's criminal and drug screening checks that we do during employment. Advertising, this supports programmatic advertising citywide. That includes such advertising as LinkedIn, iHeart Media, Urban News, Mountain Express, JobFare registrations, as well as Ola Carolina, and the North Carolina League of Municipalities.
Can I ask you a quick question? The legal support, is that somebody from our, from the city attorney's office? It's just that this, or is that an outside?
They have their own attorney, Mr. Henning.
Okay.
You're talking about for civil service?
Yeah, for civil service. That's outside.
Yes, they have an attorney.
And that doesn't include, if we were to bring in someone to support our internal legal department for an actual case or hearing, this is strictly to pay their.
Like their monthly council.
The Civil Service Board has its own council that's outside the city.
If their attorney would sit in on a case, then we pay that additionally on top of the $20,000.
It's a bizarre.
This is just like a kind of a fixed cost. But if there's actually a case, then we pay additionally. The city pays additionally.
Yeah, I mean, it is like a monthly retainer, and then you pay for additional services. But because of the inherent conflict, they have their own council. But since they're a city body, the city pays for their council. So it's a little bit odd in the setup.
As far as the prior year spending trends, I can speak to some of the ones that stand out. In fiscal year 15, we did provide a class of compensation and salary study. And that is reflected there. There were some key staffing vacancies in fiscal year 17 with the Human Resources Director and Assistant Director not being included in those. and Assistant Director not being included in those budgets. And also, we had a shift in positions, Akayla Person moved from H R to Community and Economic Development. So that's some of the changes in those spending trends. As far as budget changes, as we get into the departmental challenges slide, I'll talk about it a little bit more, but we did add a position to support employee engagement, and as well as talent acquisition. So those are some of the budgets. And they were previously temp-seasonal positions, and we converted those to full-time. Some of the department challenges, we're not unlike others in the Buncombe County area, with having the lowest unemployment percentage in the state in Buncombe County, so we needed extra support in talent acquisition. Retaining employees through employee engagements and our benefits compensation package is key. We have to set ourselves apart from our employers. We are also working to remove real and perceived barriers in the hiring process. Therefore, we're evaluating the interview panels, we're evaluating our processes, and where we advertise as well. We are also looking comprehensively at the requirements for the position. That's working towards to help diversify our workforce citywide. As far as modernizing our personnel record management, if you just think, everything an employee typically does has a form or something that has to be completed, there's a record of that. Anything from a change of address, to adding a dependent, dropping a dependent, getting a promotion, so all those things are currently and constantly being looked at to improve the experience for our employees. And the goals we have are to continue the implementation of the Performance Management Tool. The current tool is called Employee Check-Ins, and we are currently rolling that out citywide. This allows for more frequent communication between supervisors and staff, in the hopes of identifying performance issues earlier, so that that will help reduce the need for disciplinary actions. As far as increasing awareness of the H R processes and programs, we want to ensure programs like the Employee Health Center, the Asheville Project, are being utilized, as well as creating tools for frequently asked questions around leave and benefits. Continuous improvement is one of the focal points of the Asheville Way, so we are committed to looking for ways to improve. Thank you. Other questions?
Yeah, I've got a few. Jamie, one of the things that's sort of embedded in here that touches everybody and is a huge cost driver is obviously like the healthcare costs, right? Employee benefits, which, and one of the things that I've noticed here in Asheville is that we've actually been able to keep that, the growth rate of that relatively low. I mean, it's still grown, and that's just what we see nationwide, but, you know, it's much lower than in municipalities that I deal with across the country with similar size. And I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about, like, what makes Asheville different in terms of being able to control those costs versus what's happening across the country?
Sure. I think we can attribute some of that to our Employee Health Center, especially through the Asheville Project. The Asheville Project specializes in high blood pressure, high cholesterol, depression, asthma, diabetes, I think is the other one. And so there's a program that those folks are getting that ongoing comprehensive care for those chronic illnesses, so that we're hoping that that is why we don't see those larger claims on the backside. If we're preventing a stroke, a heart attack, an amputation, we hope that that's what's attributing to that. As well as, there's a wellness component to that as well, that we're trying to work on, as Chief Bezinski mentioned, the mental aspect of it. We're definitely moving forward and looking at mental wellness and the total being of our employees.
Right. In terms of sort of the structure of the plans, we've got pharmacy carved out, right? Do we have a, do we have...
We currently, it's currently included, it's through Blue Cross Blue Shield. So that is something we did look at carving out, but we were able to reallocate and negotiate on those prices.
And in terms of the prices, like in terms of folks kind of looking at this from the public, in terms of kind of getting the value for the benefits that we're getting, can you all talk a little bit about, like, kind of what the internal process is that we look at, you know, going with the carriers and saying, you know, are these the best prices we can get right now for the benefit plans? Can you talk a little bit about, like, what the process is for the city?
Yes, absolutely. This year, we actually did R F P, as I mentioned, for the, called P B N, it's the Pharmacy Benefit Management piece of the puzzle. And we sat down with our...
Which is a big piece.
It is, it's huge.
Yeah.
You're right. That control, lots of times, your T P A sees your claim, so they know what medications you're going to be on, and sometimes they can change the formulary to drive those. So what you want to do is separate that, if at all possible. So that's one thing you look at, is what are our claims, and what levels and tiers are our pharmacy benefits in? So that's some of that control we have over the plan design. But we did look at several, and R F P'd several, but we were able to come in with one that was significantly lower, so that's how.
And it was sort of the same benefits. It's the same cost to employees, it was just cheaper for us.
Exactly. There was very little disruption.
Got it. And so the final question I have on here is, is in terms of actual plan design, and this kind of goes toward like the employees, right? So I know the county right now is struggling a little bit with their plan design. And in terms of kind of our design, and in terms of why it looks the way it does, and it's, it's, it stayed pretty consistent, right, over the last couple of years, which is, again, pretty shocking, given the fact that we've been able to keep our growth rate down. Can you talk a little bit about why our plan looks the way it does today, and any features of it that help, you know, that protect employees, but also our, you know, cost savings for the taxpayers?
Right. We have planned designs because, of course, our employees are unique. There are some employees that know they're going to have set emergencies, or procedures, or things that are going to come up every year, so they want the plan that maybe has the lower deductible, and has the predictable insurance pharmacy whenever they need that. Then you have other employees that think, well, I hardly ever go to the doctor, I do need coverage, so they're able to opt with our plan that may have the higher deductibles and the percentages for the pharmacy benefits. So it's kind of some education behind that as well.
Right. And again, this is just, this is more of an editorial comment, you can tell I care about this quite a bit, but it's, in terms of the actual structure, we have a lot of best practices that are happening here in the country. We do have deductibles, we do have different forms of plan, which allows employees to choose whether or not, you know, they need more coverage or less. We have the employee, you know, health, the wellness center, so for any taxpayers and employees who are looking at this, I mean, we really have some of the best practices in healthcare going on here, and you see in every one of these cases, when we look about the overall cost, employee benefits is the second thing, you know, in every one of these. And so, whether it's taxpayers or it's employees, I mean, a lot of good things are happening in Asheville that I think folks should be aware of.
Right. Thank you. And during the R F P process, we did interview pharmacy benefit managers around the southeast, and most of them were actually excited to tell us about the Asheville Project, and they had learned about that whenever they were in school. So lots of things were modeled after the Asheville Project.
And we have a wellness program also, Jamie.
That is correct.
That, can you talk a little bit about that, and talk about, you know, what the city has done to figure out whether that wellness program is working?
Right. So what we do is we meet quarterly with our Blue Cross Blue Shield representative, and kind of get a utilization review of the healthcare claims. And based on those claims, the ones that are sort of trending the highest, we try to offer lunch and learns for our employees, so they can, you know, go and learn more about that. Is it, you know, about nutrition? Is it about how to read labels when I go to the grocery store? So those are some of the things we do as far as wellness, is actually offering onsite things as well.
But, I mean, the idea of the programs that employees pay less, less in insurance costs, if they participate in the wellness program, and what, what does that mean for an employee? And, you know, I mean, it costs the city more money, because employees don't pay as much money, but so what's the, what's the trade-off there?
Exactly. Our, the employees have a timeframe to get a wellness check, pretty much a physical. Then they have to fill out an online questionnaire, and there's so many points they have to earn in a timeframe. And if they successfully earn those points, then they do get a discount in their premiums for their health insurance plan. So that's one of the things that we offer to incentivize our employees as far as wellness in addition.
And if I could add to that, the benefit to the city and to the taxpayer is that if I'm engaging in those wellness activities, and if I'm getting those regular checkups, and I find that I have high cholesterol, or I'm prediabetic, then they have, then I have an opportunity to address that before I end up in a more chronic condition. So the good news is that I'm going to likely be more healthy, and therefore live a better life, and secondarily, pay less out of my own pocket, and pay less of the premiums on the part of the city as well.
And I ask this question, but, and you can just say yes or no, because I'm guessing I know the answer. So the Health Center costs us $800,000 a year, but that is a deal compared to what it would cost us to not have that. Is that right?
Yes, that is correct. So there's cost avoidance through less absenteeism, having the Health Center, increased productivity, and the wellness piece that they're getting as well.
And the claims. And the extra you'd pay for an external doctor, which we basically contract for.
Exactly. You have that difference.
Great.
Okay, any other questions? All right. Thank you very much, Jamie. So why don't we move planning to the next public work session? Planning, thank you for sitting here.
Thanks, Todd. Oh, shucks.
You learned a lot, though, because you were here.
Just think about how much better your presentation is.
You have good healthcare.
So, yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to, I hope it's okay with everybody. We don't rush it. Okay. So we will, we're adjourned from this work session, we will come back here in about 17 minutes, that clock is wrong, for the regular city council meeting.